Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The time is seven o'clock and I would like to call to order the the October twelfth, twenty twenty-two Parent and Community Advisory Committee meeting. At this point, I will continue to call it the PCAC for shorter reference. And this the purpose of this meeting is for the committee to discuss the recommendations for the suggested bylaws that were tabled during our last discussion when our meeting September first, twenty twenty-two. And it's going to be imperative that we review these bylaws and hopefully can adopt them tonight. We will move through with the recommendations will be taken into consideration by all parties involved. Emotions have to be adopted and approved by the majority of the PCAC in order for us to move forward. The next step will be repairing these bylaws so we can submit to present it to the Board of Education. Okay? This meeting is being recorded as Ms. Lopez just mentioned, and it is on the PGCPS's board webpage for public view. Ms. Lopez, can you please take roll call?
Good evening. This is Kira Walker, so I will be taking roll call for this evening, serving as the Recording Secretary. If you can please say here or present when I call your name, and I do apologize if I mispronounce your name, please correct me. Reverend Dr. Orlando Jermaine Bego or Bejo?
Bego, present.
Thank you. Mr. Clarence Dixon? Mr. Clarence Dixon? Mr. Will Epps?
Present.
Ms. I am so, I so much apologize. Satia?
Satia Hollenshed.
Satia Hollenshed, thank you.
Present.
Dr. Sheila Jackson? Dr. Sheila Jackson?
She is present, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, she absent, absent, I'm sorry.
Okay. Ms. Carletta Lundie?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Adrian Mayo Brown?
Present.
Ms. Dolores Milhouse?
Present.
Dr. Sharon H. Porter?
Present.
Mr. T. Carter Ross?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Keisha Thorpe?
Present.
Kira Walker, I am present. Mrs. Robin Welsh?
Present.
And Ms. Wood, how do you pronounce your first name, Ms. Wood?
Talise.
Talise, thank you, Ms. Talise Wood. Thank you. And Mrs. Adams Stafford?
Present.
Thank you. And that concludes roll call.
Okay, so we have a call?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. So I want to thank everyone for being here today. I'm very excited for us to have our second PCAC meeting. This is going to be a great year for us. I'm Dolores Milhouse, and I have been elected as the Chair of Committee. And I am representing District Seven. I would like to take an opportunity to also efficiently introduce the rest of the newly elected PCAC officers. Mr. Will Epps is the co-chair, and he is here as a business representative. Ms. Kyra Walker, Kira Walker, who just did the roll call, thank you so much. She is the Recording Secretary, and she is representing District Eight. I want to thank our board member liaison, Mrs. Shayla Adams Stafford, for the work that she's done thus far, helping us get to this second meeting. And I want to thank the board staff who have so graciously helped us really get organized and have a really good understanding how they will support us to make sure that this is a seamless transition for us. So Ms. Rosa Lopez, Mr. Joe Day Newsome, and Ms. Jessica Lopez, good afternoon. So I want to thank everyone, our PCAC members. You can see the list of their names on Board Doc. They are here to represent you all. We have CEO Desi Mees. We have a still pending for labor, but the faith-based community is represented civic and community, the business, as well as members from each district. So what I want to do is I want to move into right now, first discussion, which was the first part of the agenda, which is approval of the meeting minutes for September first, twenty twenty-two. Are there any objections to approving the September first, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none. The agenda is approved. We'll move to section one point four, adoption of the media agenda for October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any objections to adopting the October twelfth, twenty twenty-two agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. The next item is item two point zero, discussion and action items. As I stated earlier, the adoption of the suggested PCAC bylaws is very important. As a committee, we want to be seen as a standing committee so we can begin the work that we have been placed here to do. In order to do so, we need to have bylaws in place that are presented to the board as well as approved by the board. And so as a follow-up item from the last meeting, there was some suggestions that we would table the bylaws. In the discussion, we also talked about making sure that we would review it during, in between the meetings to make sure that we can come back and really have a very robust discussion. So we're going to review the suggested bylaws and provide recommendations to the PCAC bylaws during tonight meetings. The suggested bylaws were shared with the members before the meeting to give an opportunity for each of them to make these recommendations in an effort to move forward with the task I'm proposing, that we make an adoption of the suggested PCAC bylaws, and then listen to recommendations by the PCAC members and adopt them accordingly by the majority vote. So at this time, are there any objections to adopting the bylaws suggested as they stand? And then we can move through and do recommendation, recommended changes per section. Are there any objections to adopting the bylaws? As they stand? Hearing none, the bylaws are adopted. Okay. So we can pull up the, the bylaws. And what we will do is to, we need to review and approve the bylaws, which we've just done. So now, if there are any suggested suggestions, what we're going to do is we're going to go through each section of the bylaws. Okay? Um, the, there are ten sections, and we will discuss the sections one at a time. So that way, we have given everybody the opportunity. I am not going to read the bylaws word for word. We've had the time to review. Hopefully, we've taken that time, and we also, you also receive, you know, information and resources to look at to help you and guide you in tonight. So what I'm going to do is ask if there are any objections to adopting each section. And if you object, please say so. If not, it will be adopted. If you do object, we will put the section aside until the end and go back and discuss it. If you have an amendment you want to propose, please make a motion. Tell me what the portion of the bylaw you want to eliminate and the language you want to use as a substitute. And I want us to be very clear, you have to be very clear on the change that you want to recommend. So we can make sure that it's recorded properly, and we can make the amendment to that section according to your suggestion if adopted. I will rephrase what you say to keep clear, and we can discuss each amendment one at a time, then vote on this amendment. After amendments are finished, we will do a roll call and vote whether or not to adopt the section as amended. Okay, there's a discussion of the suggested bylaws. So far, we are and looking at the name in the background, the background just really talks about why the PCAC is in place. And it's a description of the board policy fifteen hundred and the education article, the Maryland Education Article four dash one one two. So this pretty much is the law and policy that the PCAC has to follow. So the recommendation to this is for me that we keep it based on where it is, but I'm opening up the floor if there's any discussion or any recommendation to change the background portion of it. Hearing none, that section is adopted, and it will stay as stands, will not adopt it, but it will not be changed. We'll go into Article One. Article One is the name in its parent Community Advisory Council abbreviated PCAC. Are there any objections to adopting section one? Hearing none, the motion is passed. We're moving into section two, the purpose. Are there any objections to adoption of section two?
Madam Chair, question?
Yes.
When we would like to add a section under a particular section, I'm not sure where this would go with my suggestion. I don't know if it would go within purpose, or would it go as an additional section? So I would like to make a motion to add a section that speaks to the role of the council.
Okay. And so
But I don't know where it would go.
Okay, so you can make the motion. Uh huh.
Yeah, she will have to make an object, and then that will be at the end to make them.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so, okay. I didn't know if that was when we're adding a section, because I don't have any situations with the article two. Okay, so I would object.
But you're asking about the roles of the board members, right?
Of the council, yeah.
Right, right, not the board members, I'm sorry, the committee members, correct?
Yes.
And so right now, it, it, it just goes like maybe a membership it may go?
Oh, okay, because we don't have a section for that.
Okay, we do. Article three is membership.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for that clarification, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, can you have the, the document enlarged on the screen?
Yes. How was that?
Perfect.
Okay, so I want to go back to Article Two for clarification for purpose. Do we have any recommendations or any objections to adopting Article Two purpose? Hearing no objections, the motion is passed to accept Article Two and the purpose as stated. We'll move into Article Three, membership.
So this is where I would say, Madam Chair, object to add.
So I'm gonna say first, we're in section, we're Article Three membership. Are there any objections to adopt section for Article Three for membership?
Yes.
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 So okay, so at this point, we have an objection to Article Three membership? Are there any other objections? Okay, and so at this time, do we want to go ahead and state what the objection is?
Um, Ms. Milhouse, we can just note that Ms. Lundie made an objection, and we will count that she made an objection on section three, and we will come back.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so moving on to Article Four. So Ms. Lundie, you, you have that? You have your stuff noted, right? So we can come back to you.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, yes.
Okay, thank you. So Article Four? Are there any objections?
Yes, Madam Chair, yes, Will Epps would like to object for changes in that Article Four.
Okay. Noted? That there's objection to Article Four for officers? Any other objections? Hearing none, we'll move on to Article Five. Are there any objections to adopting section Article Five, other positions? Hearing none, the motion is passed to accept Article Five, other positions. We're moving on into, are there any objections to adopting Article Six, Terms of Office?
Sharon Porter, have a change for that one. I would like to see.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Are there any other objections?
Good evening. It's Satia Hollenshed. I do have a change that I wanted to suggest to this section for terms of office.
Okay. Thank you. It's noted. Are there any other? Okay, hearing the two, we'll move on. Are there any objections to adopting Article Seven for meetings? Hearing no objections, the motion is passed to accept Article Seven, meetings as stands. Okay, thank you. Moving on, are there any objections to Article Eight, Board Discretion over PCAC? Hearing none, the motion is passed to accept Article You, you're moving so fast for me. Thank you, Article Eight, Board Discretion over PCAC. We're moving on to Article Nine. Are there any objections to adopting Article Nine, PCAC Authorized Action? Hearing none, the motion is passed to accept Article Nine.
Chairwoman Milhouse, I raised my hand. I just had a question. I had a question about this, Article Nine. And so I'd like to just add that at the end. It was just a question that may be more of a policy, not necessarily a bylaw question.
Okay, so noted, there's a question for Article Nine. Thank you, Ms. Adams Stafford. Okay, we'll move into Article Ten. Are there any adopting Article Ten, Waste, Fraud, Abuse, Conflict of Interest Prohibited? Hearing no objections, the motion is passed to accept that Article Ten as stands. And that is the final article. So now, when we go back up, and we will begin reviewing of the recommendations for amendment.
Article Three is the first.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Ms. Milhouse?
Yes.
Yeah, I think objection was made by
Ms. Lundie?
Lundie.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Do I wait for you, Madam Chair, to invite me to come, or?
No, you, yes, come on, I'm on it. You can come on.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. So my recommendation for added under Article Three of membership, the motion is to add this language is to, for the purpose on the membership, the purpose of the council, to support and promote the involvement of parents in the education of their child, or in parentheses, children, I mean, R E N for children, period. That's my first one. Then I have a second suggestion. So again, to repeat that, to support and promote the involvement of parents in the education of their child, in parentheses, R E N, children, you know, to be children, period.
And is that replacing any language?
No, that's in addition.
That's in addition.
Yes. That's just this recommendation.
May I repeat that, please?
Yes.
To support and promote.
And promote the involvement of parents in the education of their child, and in parentheses, R E N, closed parentheses, you know, children, period.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the second recommendation is, we act as a resource to Prince George's County School Board, especially in the solution of community-related concerns which affect the school and its students, period. Again, the suggestion, recommendation, we act as a resource to Prince George's County School Board, especially in the solution of community-related concerns which affect, which affect the school and its students, period. Those are my two recommendations, suggestions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, do you have that?
If you can repeat after concerns which affect the school, you said the school and children?
Right, thank you, yeah, concerns which, which affect the school and its students, period.
Thank you.
You're welcome, no problem.
Okay, so Ms. Walker, I'm gonna I'm gonna need you to read that back so that they can hear that in its entirety of what is being recommended as an amendment, and then I'll call for a motion.
Okay, so under Article Three, Membership Number Nine, the recommendation is to add to support and promote the involvement of parents in the education of their child or children. So again, number nine, to support and promote the involvement of parents in the education of their child or children. Number ten, we act as a resource to the Prince George's County Public School Board, especially in solution of community-related concerns which affect the school and its students. Again, number ten, we act as a resource to Prince George's County Public School Board, especially in solution of community-related concerns which affect the school and its students.
Madam Chairwoman, is the correction in the number, number ten? We act as a resource to the Prince George's County, and thank you for that, Public School Board, especially in the solution of community-related concerns which affect the school and its students.
Thank you.
You're welcome, no problem.
Okay, and so can you read that again?
We act as a, number ten, we act as a resource to the Prince George's County Public School Board, especially in the solution of community-related, related concerns which affect the school and its students. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And so at this time, I'm hearing the amendments. I'm opening up the floor for someone to make a motion to accept the amended or the addition, amended additions to section three? Members, membership? Make a motion?
Ms. Milhouse?
Yes.
Yes, they will have to make a motion for section that she's adding.
Right, the, go back up, the section Article Three.
Yes.
Membership, yes.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it, because, can I ask a question now, or should I wait? Okay, at what point, if we like the suggestion but wanted to put it in a different article, is that now? Or do we have to accept it, and then make the suggestion to move it? I just don't know which. Because I like the recommendations, but I kind of would like to recommend putting in Article Two instead. But I don't know if we have to vote, and then I said, I don't, I don't know the order, but that's just what I'm thinking.
Okay, so Ms. Lopez got me if I'm incorrect in this, but since we have opened up for Article Three, and we making a recommendation for Article Three, then we are providing a petition to the floor to motion to accept that change for Article Three? And then if not, if there is an objection to it, if it is adopted, as a committee, we can go back and identify a more appropriate article if this is not the right place.
Okay, so okay, so I think you want to move this, this part of this section to Article Two, correct?
Yes, the two recommendations that were made to Article Two.
Okay, so I think you will have to object if I'm not mistaken, to this, this, this recommendation and make a, an amendment to, to section two.
Right, but can we have it also as part of any discussions? Would that be part of the discussion?
Yes, but yeah, just make the motion that you will have, you will need to move it to that part.
Okay. Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we're going to move forward with the motion to accept the changes for Article Three?
Yeah, we, we We don't have a motion yet.
Sorry, we, yeah, we have to make a motion, and then we the roll call for that part, except for the first line that they want to add to section two.
Right.
Point of order, Madam Chair, Orlando Bego. It was my understanding that Ms. Lundie made the motion to make the, the change to Article Three.
Yes.
If that is the case, then Ms. Brown can offer a friendly emotion, a friendly amendment to the motion in which Ms. Lundie will have to then accept to move it to Article Number Two.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Bego. So at this point, we will move forward.
So if Ms., if Ms. Brown would offer a, a friendly amendment to the motion, and Ms. Lundie would accept the friendly emotion to move it to Article Two, we can then vote on that without having to vote on the amendment itself. That friendly emotion is just to move it from Article Three into Article Two.
Okay, so can I offer a friendly amendment?
Madam Chair, we don't currently have a motion on the floor.
Right, that's what I was saying. We gotta have a motion first.
Make a motion to amend.
Yes. So I'm making, so I need, I'm opening up the floor for a motion to be placed for the amendment of Article Three.
So is the correct, is the correct language to say, we, I, I request a motion to amend Article Three?
So
You could say I moved, you could say I moved to amend. I moved to amend Article Three.
Okay. I moved to amend Article Three.
We have a second?
A second.
Okay, are there any discussion?
I'm sorry, who made the second? I didn't catch that.
I did, Carter Ross.
Thank you.
Now Ms. Brown, all for her Now Ms. Brown, offer her friendly amendment.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the motion to move this recommended, uh, additions to Article Two.
A second.
Now she can accept that friendly amendment or reject it.
Yeah, Ms. Lundey, I accept.
Okay, thank you, we, 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 we are doing well, you all. And, um, are there is any further discussion on the matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. We do roll call by majority vote for the amendment for Section Two, Article Two. Amendment changes for the purpose.
Are we ready for the roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Reverend Dr. Orlando Jermaine, uh, Vega?
Yay.
Mr. Clarence Dixon? Mr. Cl- Mr. Will Epps?
Yay.
Ms. Hollensh- Hollenshad?
Yay.
Dr. Jackson? She's absent, my apologies. Ms. Lundey?
Yay.
Ms. Brown, Ms. Mayo Brown?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Millhouse?
Yes.
Dr. Porter?
Yay.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Thorpe?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Walker, yes. Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we have one abstention, um, and one. One, yes, one absent, yes.
Two. Mistakes on this line.
Oh, you're right, my apologies. Two absent and one, two, three, four. Eleven, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. So we can move forward, um, I believe the next, um, area of discussion was Article Three. Am I correct, Ms. Walker?
Yes, you are, uh, Article Four and Mr. Epps.
Okay.
An objection.
Article Four.
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Millhouse, um, I think there were two, um, sentences that Ms. Lundey had, so are they keeping it on membership? Cause you have to vote.
The, for the two, I thought we just moved the two sentences from membership.
Yeah, that's right.
Moved them, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Lopez, keep me straight, but I'm, I'm trying to stay on top. Appreciate you.
No problem.
So we are now, um, able to review Article Four, um, officers, correct? The recommendations for that section, Article Four. And the first recommendation came from, um, were there two recommendations or just one, Mr. Epps?
Uh, yes, I wanted to, uh, make two recommendations, uh, to the chair responsibility, uh, and one recommendation to the vice chair. Um, and yeah, there's those two, yes.
So can you provide what the recommendation is that you have?
Uh, yes, item number ten. I would like to add on, the chair has the ability to appoint subcommittees after first year of a two-year term. The chair has the ability to appoint subcommittees after the first year of a two-year term.
Okay.
The second change or add-on would be the chair has the ability to call up to one additional special meeting per quarter after first year of two-year term. The chair has the ability to call up to one additional special meeting per quarter after first year of two-year term. And maybe we should add to include new subcommittee members.
Okay. Ms. Walker, do you have that?
Yes, so I have, um, for, in addition to number ten, the chair has the ability to add subcommittees after the first year of a two-year term. Is that correct?
Yes.
Addition to number eleven? Or is this also addition to number ten? The chair has the ability to call up to one additional meeting per quarter after the first year of a two-year term to include new subcommittee members. Is that, did you say members?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
For, uh, item eleven, um, the vice chair, I would like to add, performs other duties as assigned by the chair as needed.
So I have the vice chair performs other duties as assigned as needed by the chair.
Okay. Were there any other recommendations from any other committee members? Ms. Walker? Was that only Mr. Epps?
Yes, only Mr. Epps for that article.
Okay, and so if you could read back the, um, the recommended amendment for number ten and eleven?
Number ten, the, in, in addition to what is already presented, um, number ten, in addition, the chair has the ability to add subcommittees after the first year of a two-year term. The chair has the ability to call up to one additional special meeting per quarter after the first year of a two-year term to include new subcommittee members.
Okay. And number eleven?
Number eleven, in addition to what is, um, already presented, the vice chair performs other duties as assigned as needed by the chair.
Okay, thank you. And so Mr. Epps, would you like to make a motion to amend Article Four, Item Ten and Item Eleven?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend Article Four, Items Ten and Eleven.
We have a second?
Second, Sharon Porter.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Any discussions?
Unready this, Madam Chair. Mr. Epps, can you provide some clarity around one, why after one year the chair is able to create a subcommittee and two, uh, the subcommittee appointees, would those be exclusively for board members? For committee members or persons outside of this committee?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Vega, um, so my thought process behind this is from a, at least why I first joined this, in this, uh, committee in the first place, and that's to get true parent engagement and involvement. And from, uh, from my perspective, um, we can only be successful as a committee if we have more parental engagement. And I believe it would take us at least the first, first year of, uh, carrying out the work of this new committee to see what parents are actually available to be more involved. Once we have more parents to do more work, then at that time, I think there would be a need for more leadership, uh, throughout the county, which is where the subcommittee uh, would be, would have more invol- involvement, uh, so that it's not taxing on anybody else on this call, uh, if we have work going on. The, and your second question, Dr. Vega?
Uh, you somewhat answered it in the first question in terms of those persons who will be appointed to the subcommittee. Um, my question was, would they be exclusively from this committee, but I think you kinda answered that question as saying, as we begin to broaden, um, this committee across the county and begin to parents, I'm wondering, um, if that is the answer to my second question. Should that be a part of the language in terms of who then can serve on the subcommittee?
Uh, yes, and I would even probably broaden it, and these were just my notes as I was reading through the bylaws and, and, and if I'm a reader and I'm just a, a parent in the county, um, I wanted to be, I would like it to be simple, but at the same time, my, my hope is that the chair or vice chair or any position is inclusive of all members as we put together a subcommittee that's needed after we deem the need is there, uh, from a collective approach. Um, my fear was that we were gonna go from a four-page bylaws to, you know, twenty, which, which, you know, I don't think we wanted to. I am, I will say one more thing, I am, um, if we do have agreement on the nature of the updates to the descriptions, um, we should flesh out more, how to make it more compact, um, so that it, it's, it's carrying a heartbeat of what, um, I think should be carried out from a long-term perspective.
Okay, is, is, is there any other, um, points of discussion?
Yes. Uh, Madam Chairwoman, thank you. Yeah, um, member Epps, um, myself also had a concern about the, um, the one additional special meeting, and also I wanted to ask a question, when you say call up to, are you saying called at least? That's my first comment. Does that mean at least?
Um, well, I would say, I'm saying up to, so that whoever the chair is at some point in the future, whether it's, it's, it's a present chair now or, or a chair later, that we're not, um, heavy on meetings. So the max week, the max additional meeting we can have in addition to the monthly meeting is one over a three-month period.
Okay.
Purpose of that meeting would be, okay, well, we probably need more extra time with a, a new set of peers, new set of parents that's coming on board, um, to meet with them at a secondary meeting.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, so if it's the will of the board, I have no problems with the one, but I would like not to limit it. And so I wanted to know, would you be amenable to adding language based on your reason for doing this? So to, um, to encourage, um, parental engagement?
Yes.
To be more clear, you know, so that as these bylaws are being shared with the public, they can be encouraged.
This is not a, this is, you know, I, I consider, uh, at least for me, let me speak for myself, um, um, I consider, you know, myself to be a conduit to other relationships, particularly fathers that I have um, to come aboard, you know, this is just not a, a title or seat for me, it's a, so I can go back to the, to the masses of, of, of people that I have relationships with, so they can come on board and, and kinda spread that way.
Okay, so finally, uh, Madam, um, uh, Madam Chairwoman, so to, um, Mr. Epps, if he would be amenable to adding to his language to encourage, um, parental engagement, and then if we, if it's a consensus of the board to have the one additional special meeting, or could we change that language as needed? Additional special, uh, meetings as needed would be my other recommendation for a language change to your, um, motion to add these, this particular one for number, part two of this article. For number, what would be, number nine or ten? Number ten? No, ten, okay, thank you.
It's ten.
All right, ten.
Yeah, it's number ten.
Yeah, it's number ten, correct.
Yep, thank you so much.
And, and so, um, I, I wanna add for a discussion piece, uh, Mr. Epps, that based on the bylaws as they stand, or that we just adopted, the chair, vice chair, and recording secretary shall be elected annually. So when your language speaks to, um, being able to appoint a subcommittee, um, after a year in the two-year term, the committee members are two-year term. The, um, officers are elected annually.
Okay.
So, um, you know, as the bylaws stand now, your recommendation would never allow for a subcommittee to be appointed by a chair unless they were elected the, a second year.
So then I would say,
So my recommendation would be to remove that stipulation as it relates to being able to do so after a year. And to put it, um, as determined by the committee as a whole, the need for.
Okay.
Because I do wanna say, you know, we, we are moving through this, um, the recommendations that we are making now, um, as we move forward, there may be a point that we want to further make recommendations and changes and amendments to the bylaws, and we can do so, so we're not locked in today.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're not locked in and say, okay, whatever it is today, right now, we gotta keep it for the next year or two.
Okay, right. Yeah, so I would agree, we can, we can strike the two-year or the first year of the two-year term language.
So can you, can you repeat, um, with this suggested, uh, recommendations, um, how you would accept the revision and repeat that revision, so Ms. Walker can, can gather that?
Chair Millhouse, um, Mr. Rose, um, has had his hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry, cause I can't see that.
Yeah, I, I just had one other point, I was, I was gonna raise the same point that, that you made, Madam Chair, about the, um, the the line in Article, uh, Eight, but also with the adding an additional meeting currently, Article, uh, Seven governs our meetings, and it specifies only that the committee shall meet at times and places convenient to its members. There isn't within the bylaws a requirement for, or a limitation, um, to the, to the number of meetings, so, um, with the, I, I think the core of what, uh, what you, what you're proposing, Mr. Epps, really for that is about to being able to form a subcommittee or a special committee, and then to have a meeting in which those people, if they aren't members of the board, are able to participate, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So you're saying, Mr. Ross, that we don't need the, uh, the second recommendation that, that I have recommended because of the
Cause Article Seven.
Yeah, right, gotcha.
Right, so, uh, I think the only thing that might be necessary is to specify that members of those, of, of, of a subcommittee or special committee could participate in meetings at the request of the chair or something like that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
And I also have, um, this is Ms. Walker, I, I do have, um, a question or comment, um, I would like to discuss the membership of the subcommittee, if we can specify that it's a parent or guardian of a current, um, Prince George's County Prince George's County Public School student?
Okay, so right now we are on Article four, so we would have to go back for discussion to make that.
Well, this is for the subcommittee. The subcommittee.
To the subcommittee.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay. Okay, so let's, let's, are there any points of discussion? Okay, so let, let's, let's read the amended suggestion that you proposed, Mr. Epps. So we can be clear on what we are recommending for an amendment, so we can make the motion.
So the only change that we, after hearing the discussion and, or hearing everybody's thoughts, the only change or amendment we have to, or to item number ten is the chair has the ability to appoint subcommittees that are parents or, or legal guardians of Prince George's County Public Schools.
Okay. So Ms. Walker, once you have that, if you can read that back to the committee?
Number ten, adding to number ten, the language will read, the chair has the ability to add subcommittees that are parents or legal guardians of Prince George's County Public School students.
Yes, that's correct.
And one more point of clarification, should that say subcommittee members?
Yeah, read, read that, read it again, please.
The way that is right now, the chair has the ability to add subcommittees that are party, parents or legal guardians of Prince George's County Public School students.
And your suggestion was?
Subcommittee members, just add the, the word members.
Well, the reason why I like subcommittees is because we might have more than one committee. Multiple members under different committees, potentially.
So let's do this, let, let, let's read it as it's said to be amended, and then let's make a motion, and then we can move forward with any further discussion on that part.
Okay. The chair has the ability to add subcommittees that are part, parents or legal guardians of Prince George's County Public School students.
Okay. And then item eleven?
Item eleven, the vice chair performs other duties as assigned as needed by the chair. I'm, yes, that, that's correct.
So Mr. Epps, based on what was communicated, do you, can you make a motion to amend?
I make a motion to amend.
Is there a second?
Second it. Lundie?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I have.
Yes. Miss Thorpe, I see Miss Thorpe is showing on my screen right now.
Yes.
I wanted to see if it could also be amended to have, to include our community members that have a vested interest in the education of students of Prince George's County.
Ms. Walker, did you get that?
Community members with a vested interest in Prince George's County?
In the students of Prince George's County.
Is this a friendly amendment to the motion or? Asking, okay.
I, I have a question as well, Talise Wood.
Miss Wood?
Yes, well, the language, parents of Prince George's County Public School include parents of graduates of Prince George's County Public School? Or is it limited to current students?
Is that a question for Mr. Epps or for me, because I, I made the recommendation to change the language?
Whomever, I just wanted to bring it up.
I, I made the recommendation based upon it being a I made the recommendation with the view of it being current parents, but, you know, we can, I'm open if we want to include. But I believe
But if we also have the language.
Miss Thorpe was saying, community members.
Right, that makes it inclusive. For every.
Yes.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
Um, so I, I believe that we do need to vote on the, a friendly amendment, or Mr. Epps needs to accept a friendly.
Yes.
Before we.
Mr. Epps? Mr. Epps?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking. My preference at this time is to keep it as current students or specified current students, parents of current students.
But the recommended change was to include in there, did you say community members, I think it said? So it wasn't removing the parents of current students, but it was including community members as well, as we have on this board itself. Parents, community members, business owners as such. Just for clarity, Mr. Epps.
Repeat what you just said, Dolores.
The, the inclusion of the community members is, is just an addition to having the subcommittee be able to be open up to a wider group of members of the community, such as the board makeup is right now.
Correct, okay, correct.
Yes, so the friendly suggestion is to make it more inclusive by adding that component to.
Okay, I understand, I agree, motion to agree.
Okay. So do you accept the friendly?
I accept a friendly motion or suggestion?
For the change.
Okay.
So Ms. Walker, can you read it out again, please?
The chair has the ability to add subcommittees that are parents or legal guardians or community members with vested interest in students of Prince George's County Public Schools. No, students, yes, students of Prince George's County, that's what he said.
And so, Mr. Epps, can you make a motion to amend?
I make a motion to amend.
Article four for officers, the section.
I make a motion for amendment, Article four, Officer, Section, Section ten.
Okay. And including.
That Ms. Carol Walker just stated.
Right, as well as Section eleven.
As well as Section eleven.
May I have a motion, let me for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thorpe, any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes?
Aye.
Any opposes, say nay. Okay, thank you, can we move forward with roll call or majority vote?
Yes. Reverend Dr. Bago?
Yes.
Mr. Epps?
Yes.
Ms. Hollingshade?
Yes.
Ms. Lundie?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Milhouse?
Yes.
Dr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Thorpe?
Yes.
Ms. Walker, yes. Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Miss Wood?
Yes.
So we have two absent and twelve yes.
So by majority vote, Article four for officers, the amendment, the section has passed. Can you please advise the next section for review?
The next section for review is Section six, Terms of Office.
We made a recommendation for an amendment.
Dr. Porter and Ms. Hollingshade.
Dr. Porter, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, mine is really first a question, perhaps, to this committee. Is it necessary to identify if an individual no longer resides in the district that they're representing? Is there a need to identify that? Like, do we continue serving in that role if we no longer reside in that district?
That's a great question. I, I think that may also go to the point of the policy itself that maybe need to be flushed out in the policy. And Ms. Adam Stafford? I want to say that we may want to table that, because I don't know if it's in the detail of the bylaws, that probably should be something that should be flushed out. Because I would believe that we would have to go back and do applications and everything else or to do some type of discussion, but that would be in a board members level to discuss that, so.
Okay, I can take note of that and take it to the Policy and Governance Committee.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great question.
Okay. And the other amendment was made by, the amendment suggestion was made by?
I just had two questions, this is Mrs. Hollingshade.
Ms. Hollingshade, thank you.
For number eighteen, it says the chair, vice chair, and recording secretary shall be elected annually. I wanted to see if we could have a discussion about that, because it seems as though we would be doing elections and doing the process every year, so we may want to talk about that and explore how the members are feeling of the committee. And then for question number, my second question is nineteen. I think we need to have it clearly spelled out as to what happens when a successor is not appointed, or who will be the person to appoint the successor.
Okay, so do, do you have a recommendation that you want to put forward?
I don't have a recommendation, I just wanted us to kind of talk about it to figure out if we can come up with something as a committee.
Ms. Mil, Ms. Milhouse?
Yes.
Second point of information, so on the bylaws, Section seven, it says each member of PCCAC should serve for a term of two years. A member may not serve more than two consecutive terms. And a member whose term has expired shall continue to serve until a successor is appointed. So that's on the bylaws. Just so you know, point of information.
Thank you, but I think your question was also.
Who is going to appoint?
Who's appointing?
Correct.
Is it appointment by the normal application process? And so then that may be a component for clarification or amendment to Article seven. But.
Point of information, Ms. Milhouse? On Article, I mean, on the bylaws as well, fifteen hundred. Article two, A, it says nine members shall be appointed representing the nine elected Board of Education districts, and each appointment shall be made by the board members representing the respective district. Each appointment member must be a parent or guardian, or at least one student currently involved in the school system.
Okay.
Okay.
So I guess my, my suggestion for Article seven, number nineteen, if they could clearly spell out that a members, a member whose term has expired shall continue to serve until a successor is appointed by their respective Board of Education Chair. Or Board of Education.
You mean Article six, Article six, right, our terms of office, that's.
Article six, Terms of Office, number nineteen.
Okay. If you just state that one more time so Ms. Walker can capture that.
Um, let me see, remember, so, um, I guess, after, until a successor is appointed by the Board of Education representative.
Okay, so the first time you said, a member whose term has expired shall continue to serve until a successor is appointed by their respective Board of Education member. The second time you said respective Board of Educat, did you say at the same time, the same way both times, my apologies?
We can go with the first one.
Okay, so a member whose term has expired shall continue to serve until a successor is appointed by their respective Board of Education member.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And so let's read the recommendation, so we can move for a motion to amend.
The current recommendation is to add to Article six, number eighteen, a members, a member whose term has expired shall continue to serve until their successor is appointed by their respective Board of Education member.
Okay.
Correct.
What I also.
Number nineteen.
That was, yeah, that was nineteen, and I do know that there was some discussion around eighteen that was requested to have as it relates to electing annually the, the officers for the committee.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And you, at this point, you did not have a recommendation for a change, you just wanted.
No, I just wanted us to have it as a point of discussion. Just to make sure, because otherwise we would be electing new chair or vice chair, recording secretary every year, and that may take away from the work that was done the previous year.
I have a question.
Yes.
What was the intention of setting the election to be annually? Was there any specific reason why it was done?
We, we don't have any historical information for that, we just know that these were draft bylaws that were presented for us to review and make any recommendations that we see for. So I can say that in reviewing other jurisdictions, they, some of them had it annually, and some of them had it based on the term of the committee itself. So there is no true rhyme or reason for it to be in there that I know or I could find, so if there, if, if there's a recommendation that's to be made, we can make a recommendation to change it that the officers are elected and will serve out the term as stated for membership for the committee.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Jodeid Newsom, yes.
The PCCAC was created by the Board of Education by Board Policy number fifteen hundred.
Yes.
Policy fifteen hundred sets forth in paragraph number six, the PCCAC shall elect their own chair, vice chair, and recording secretary annually in accordance with their bylaws. So the reason why the draft bylaws, why it was written in the draft bylaws for you all, is because the policy that created the PCCAC seemed to mandate annual elections. And what we wanted with bylaws that would be consistent with the policy. And what we wanted with bylaws that would be consistent with the policy that created the, the PCCAC.
Okay, so Mr. Newsom, for clarity purposes though, if we are wanting to suggest the removal of having to do the annual election for the officers, do we then recommend to the Board a suggestion to make a recommendation for change to Policy Fifteen Hundred?
I think that's your safest course.
Okay.
I think that's your safest course.
Okay. So at this point, what I'm also understanding is that that component of Article Six has to remain because it aligns with the policy itself. And in any changes that we want to make, then once we have gone through making the recommendations for each section, maybe that's an action item for the next meeting as a recommendation to the Board regarding Policy Fifteen Hundred.
Yes, I, I do want to say that Ms. Welsh, who serves on the Policy Committee, has her hand up, she may be able to offer contrasting advice or a fuller sense of the history of the policy.
Okay. Ms. Welsh?
Yes, I just, so I do want to get just a little bit of background in terms of the process of, of the policy being revised so that you have an idea of the timeframe. So that, what you're saying is absolutely correct. If you wanted, if you what, you felt like there was a need for the, the policy to be changed, then you could certainly make that recommendation as a Policy and Governance Committee. Of course, it's up to the committee to make a determination whether they want to even move in that direction. If they do, there are several steps in the process, and generally it takes anywhere from two to three months to get a policy through to a final approval. So, so you're looking at at least probably into January or February, if in fact the policy that was put onto the agenda for this year because the, the Policy and Governance Committee has already listed out their policies for the entire school year. So the change wouldn't be happening immediately. It would take time to get that change, you know, completed.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. And what I also hear you saying is, though it may take time, it, it's possible that it can happen during this school year, which then will not force us into a position to have to do another election if it is adopted and approved for the committee by next school year.
That is a possibility. I would, I would never guarantee it, but I would say, yes, it is a possibility.
Yeah, no guarantees, just as long as we understand the options that we have and that if we do it early enough, you know, it would, it won't be something that we have to focus on if it's voted to change it going forward.
Right.
Okay. Thank you so much. So. We want to table the discussion for the recommendation for Article Six, Item Eighteen, since it is part of the discussion and that may be one of our first action items at the next meeting. So can we, is, is, are you okay with that? Any further discussion about that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Ms. Hollingshed. So what we're going to do is, Ms. Walker, if you can do one more read for the changes for Article Six, Terms of Office.
Article Six, Terms of Office, number nineteen. The addition will be a members, a member whose term has expired shall continue to serve until a successor, a successor is appointed by their respective Board of Education member.
Thank you, Ms. Hollingshed. Would you like to make a motion to amend?
I would like to make a motion to amend Article Six, Item Nineteen, as read by Mrs. Walker.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
Second it, Ms. Lundey?
Thank you, Ms. Lundey. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposes?
Aye.
Hearing none, move to roll call. Move to roll call.
Reverend Dr. Bago?
Yes.
Mr. Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollingshed?
Yes.
Ms. Lundey?
Yes.
Ms. Mayo Brown?
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Millhouse?
Yes.
Dr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Carter Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Thorpe?
Yes.
Ms. Walker, yes. Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
So we have two absent and twelve yes.
And by majority vote, Section Article Six, Terms of Office, has passed. Next section for review, Ms. Walker.
The next section for review does not have any objections. Mrs. Shayla Adams Stafford had a question for Article Ten, I believe. Is that correct? Article, no. Let me make sure I am correct. It's Article Nine, the PAC Authorized Action. No objections, but a question.
Hi, so my, yes, thank you so much. My question was just specifically around the report that you all will give, and I just want to make sure I'm at the right place. Could we scroll up? Sorry, I think it's in the one above this one. We can keep going up. Up one more. Okay, sorry, we can go down. It was Article.
I think it was Section Eight.
Authorized Offer. It has to do with the report. Could we go down one more?
Section Eight.
You said Section.
I'm sorry, it's Section Nine. I'm sorry, Section Nine.
That was a written report.
Yeah.
Okay, so my question was, have you all considered how many reports you will give to the Board or outlining that possibly in policy? If your, your own internal policy, I think that Board members may be looking for by annual report, a quarterly report, or, you know, you all can determine the frequency by which you would report. It, it seems as though you can, you can have that, that freedom here, so I'm just wondering what, if that's something you want to codify in the bylaws or something that you just want to have a sort of a floor and not a ceiling? It's just kind of a question for discussion.
Um, yes, and, and I'll, and I'll take the lead on responding to that because at this time, a- as we are really trying to build up, you know, from scratch and bring us all together, my suggestion would not be to recommend at this time how often we are reporting out. And we can always come back and make the recommendation. But at this moment, I, I wouldn't want to put us in a box where we're saying we're doing a quarterly and we're almost at the end of the first quarter for the school year. You know, which doesn't give us room because we haven't began anything other than reporting out that we adopted some bylaws. You know, I think that we can, as we get through this, it may be a recommendation that we make going into next school year for, you know, to see how we begin to foundationally build out for the committee. But that's just my opinion from where I, just looking at everything and trying to gather information about what was done in the past and then how we pretty much should be moving forward because we haven't really been able to meet yet. So I want to open up the floor for any other inside discussion on this, if there is any.
Yeah, I, I, I would concur with that. I think that at this point, we don't have a good sense of what would be the best sort of reporting schedule, and I don't know that it's something we need to lock into the bylaws. It would be something that we can, a- as was suggested, handle on a policy side.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Is there any other?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, Ms. Lundey?
Yes, I also concur with you because while we have this to differentiate between minutes versus reports and what a report will actually look like.
Yeah. Yeah. So we will get there. We will get there, Ms..
Yes, I know, I know, I know this team well. I, I know that one of the previous challenges was just around, you know, not materializing of a report. And so one thing to consider might be in a future meeting, thinking about how you might develop a reporting schedule that could be due like, you know, in the beginning of, you know, a chair's term or something. But that could be something to discuss further and continue to, to think and discuss.
Okay.
Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's a great suggestion, and I, I will be following up with you. Thank you so much. Is there any other discussion from the floor? Okay, hearing none. Was there any other section that needed to be reviewed for amendment, recommended, recommended amendments? Because the last article would be Article Ten, and I don't believe we have any. Ms. Walker?
We do not have any motions for amendments for Article Ten.
Okay, and so hearing none, I want to congratulate us for moving through the bylaws and now having adopted bylaws that we can now move forward to the Board of Education for review and adoption, hopefully as well without any discussion that being sent back to us. Ms. Lopez, did I miss anything?
Uh, no, ma'am. You made the, the motion, right? The hearing now objections?
Yeah, hearing no objections to the.
To this last section, the last article.
There, there was, it was just discussion.
Gotcha.
Yes, nothing recommended for amendment. So all sections have been approved at this point in time by the committee.
Okay.
Okay, and so what we want to do now at this point, we're going to move through Two Point Two. We've just gone through the recommendations and we are completed all of the recommendations for the bylaws. I did just state that. And I want to move at this point, we, to Section Two Point Three, the PCCAC meeting dates in January and April twenty twenty-three. Please note that there have been some changes due to holidays. So for the January and April twenty twenty-three PCCAC meetings, they will be on Wednesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and Wednesday, April the twelfth, twenty twenty-three. We are, as I said, making those changes due to school holidays. Section Two Point Four, the strategic, strategic framework, PGCPS strategic framework. So I had asked Ms. Lopez to make sure that we all had a copy of the PGCPS strategic plan, specifically the framework, which just goes into a very high-level view of the vision and mission of PGCPS, as well as the four outcome goals and as it aligns with the five-year strategic priorities for the school district. And to also share with us the standing committee, committees that the Board already has in place. We've been charged with coming together and really being a vessel for the Board of Education to connect with the community and parents just to make sure that they have a voice, but to make sure that the Board itself is hearing the concerns of the community. I wanted to make sure that we didn't bypass the fact that work is already being done and what we are doing should be a compliment to what's happening and also be an opportunity to create a, a deeper look at any gaps that may exist, such as if I'm looking at the outcome goals for the strategic framework, if I'm looking at the current committees that the Board has, and I don't see where I fit in as a parent, I don't see where I fit in as the business community, I don't see as a stakeholder where I am in the support of the academic success for each student, then that's a gap that we would then bring back to the committee, discuss, see where they are, the, the likes and differences from each district, and then kind of take a charge, how do we move forward? And so in our next meeting, I am hoping that we've read, we've looked at the PGCPS strategic framework, we've gone out into our communities, we've met with our district members who have entrusted us with this role and that we go out to see what's happening in our areas to be able to bring that back so we can begin to have some discussion on the top things that we want to look at and work on as a committee. Ms. Lopez, did you have anything?
Uh, no, ma'am, unless anybody has any discussions. Or if not, you can move on to the next.
Yeah, and so I just want to mention that the committees that the Board has right now are the Academic Achievement Committee, the Policy Governance Committee, and the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee. The details and information about those committed committees are on the Board's website. I am not going to take up any more of our time to read through them. The information is also, you know, for the community on Board Docs, so you can have that information. So the more versed we are in what's happening in our school district, the better we can have an understanding of how we fit into the role as a commit- committee member to support moving our school district forward. Any questions about the framework as well as the Board committees and where I say that you can provide and get further information?
And Chair Millhouse, Ms. Lundey?
Yes. Ms. Lundey?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. Getting back to your very good point about going in the community and to see what's happening or what have you, and being a vessel and everything, I wanted to, for the public's clarification sake, when we talk about civic slash community, we are talking about civic organizations and not necessarily civic engagement. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other hands up? Because I, I unfortunately, I can't see.
No other hands.
No, thank you very much. And so Section Three Point Zero, follow-up and next step. Everything is on Board Docs, so any follow-up from the PCCAC special meeting will be posted on Board Docs upon receipt, and the PCCAC adopted bylaws will be sent to the Board for approval. Ms. Lopez, can you tell me the next Board meeting?
Uh, yes, ma'am. It will be Thursday, October twenty-seventh. We do have a workstation tomorrow, October thirteenth, but it's, it has to be request, we had the request to be added on the agenda.
And then I would strongly suggest, if you all haven't gone to any of the Board meetings, any of the committee meetings that you do so, and make sure that you are very connected and engaged with any newsletter or a- any information that your Board member is sending out. If you could also just look at the different parent committees at the schools that are in your district and reach out to them, let them know who you are. For our civic and community leaders, do the same thing, business leaders, our, our faith-based community, please reach out to see how the work that you're doing right here on this committee could align with how they can be partners with PGCPS. And at this point in time, next steps, the next meeting date will be on Wednesday, November second, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM via Zoom, and I appreciate. And I appreciate you all. We made it through our second meeting. And I would like to motion that we adjourn this meeting. The time is eight thirty PM.
So moved.
We need a second.
Thank you, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? You can stay here by yourself. You all have a great night. This is great, and so.
Thank you very much.
We'll hear from you soon.